Thank you, Rob, and welcome to our committee, the whole meeting of March twenty eighth, Gray County. Is there any declaration of interest related to any item on this agenda? Not seeing any. If one should arise, you can declare it at that time. Any business arising from these minutes or those minutes? No? Okay, good. We have a delegation this morning. Mr. James Scognac was with us. He's the Chief Development Officer and Executive Vice President of Bruce Power. He's gonna give us an update on all things Bruce Power. James, welcome.
Is that working now? Excellent. Thanks very much for having me today. It's almost the end of the week, so my voice, I'm running out of my voice. My wife usually says that means because you talk too much. But you're not allowed to say that, Mr. Warden. Just before I start with the Bruce Power update, I wanna, I wanna begin with a, with a thank you and an appreciation on behalf of the employees and the broader organization at Bruce Power. To the county of Gray, the folks that, that work on staff, first responders, people involved in community services, and all of you as elected officials for your public service. I've had the opportunity to be at a number of delegations and a number of council meetings during my twenty years at Bruce Power, and sometimes you folks take a lot of, a lot of incoming fire on things, and I think it's important, and that's part of democracy, and that's okay. But I think it's also important that we take a step back and recognize the important contributions that all of you make to public service. As certainly somebody who works as part of a large organization that works closely with all levels of government, I can tell you, it really matters to doing business in Ontario. It's something that when people are looking to invest in our province and our country that they value, so I just wanna start with a thank you to, to all of you. By way of a Bruce Power update today, I'm not gonna do a death by PowerPoint. The PowerPoint slides have been, have been circulated, and I know there's some, some helpful background information in there. And I'll take that material as read, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. There's really a few items that I really wanted to anchor today's update on, and really, before I talk about Bruce Power, I really wanna paint the, sort of the broader electricity and energy picture, both here in Ontario, across Canada, and frankly, across the world. If you sort of, if you, if you, at the highest level, if you look at what all jurisdictions around the world are faced with today is, and, and the primary drivers around this have really been the growing concern on climate change and the need to decarbonize economies, which often at times can seem at odds with, how do you balance that with economic growth? And, and, and that's an issue that not only Ontario and Canada are facing, but countries all over the world are facing. But also the combination, which, which I think was something that has been very undervalued for a number of decades. But the Russia-Ukraine war, or Russia's invasion of Ukraine more appropriately, really exposed and brought to the, the top with people's attention, a focus on energy security. And so all countries around the world are really dealing with this, this trilemma, it's often called, around affordability, economic considerations, the need to be decarbonized and fight climate change, but also the need to have energy security and reliability. And when you, when you ask people, whether they're Ontarians, Canadians, people in Europe, people in the US, customers and the public's expectation is that all of us find a way to do all three. And unless we find a way to do all three, what we will be faced with is what I call cyclical energy policy. And in the kind of conversations that we have on energy infrastructure, it's no different than a lot of the infrastructure that you deal with in your leadership roles, whether it's our, our public infrastructure, our roads, schools, hospitals, all the infrastructure that was built in the nineteen seventies and eighties that frankly, we're harvesting now. The electricity sector is no different, and so the public expects us to find a way to balance all of those. But the one thing we know for sure is that we cannot make long-term solution, we cannot advance long-term solutions if we have cyclical energy policy. Because if we have a public policy environment that is always changing its focus, it doesn't give us the kind of runway to do what we need to do in our electricity system. And I know that's sort of meat and potatoes for most people around the table, but, but that's very true in our business. So now moved to talk a bit about Ontario specifically within that context. So for the first time in a long time, Ontario's demand for electricity is growing. And that is a good sign. That means that our economy is growing. It means that we are, we're seeing a resurgence in certain areas of manufacturing. And so a growing energy demand is, is not a bad thing. We wanna see our economy grow. It provides us a lot of ability to, to tackle those challenges together. But if we take a step back and we look at where Ontario's economy is growing to, by twenty fifty, which seems like a long way off, but it really isn't, in the context of public infrastructure, electricity infrastructure. By twenty fifty, the province of Ontario is expecting between economic growth and also the need to decarbonize our economy as more people move to buying electric vehicles. And by the way, that doesn't mean everybody drives an electric vehicle, but there will be more people driving electric vehicles in the future than do today. All of these devices that we have that we plug in, data centers, battery plants, all these things, I'm hoping a resurgence in mining, for example, in Northern Ontario. All of these things will require a growing demand for electricity and a growing demand for clean electricity. And so what that means is that for our province, and you can take whatever scenario you want. Some people argue the high, the low, the medium, whatever, and I can't, I can't look you straight in the face and tell you which one it's gonna be, because I don't know. But every single one of the scenario shows a significant increase in the demand for electricity. Whether it's two times our electricity system today, three times or four times, I don't know. But what we do know is we have a significant increase in demand. And so from a Bruce Power point of view, the, the most important thing that we look at when we look at that picture is to say we need to secure what we have today first. And that's really where our investment program comes into place that we have on our site. So we generate one-third of Ontario's power today. And through the largest private investment in Canada's electricity infrastructure, we are looking to extend that to the twenty sixties and the twenty seventies. So that's when we often talk about refurb. Think about that as we're really going through our existing assets and making sure they can run through that period. Because if we think the energy demand challenge, demand issues are a challenge now in terms of what we have to build, can you imagine what they would be if we didn't have, maintain what we have today? So our first laser focus is on maintaining what we have today. And when we, when we talk about the record investment on the Bruce Power site, that's what is underway right now. But part of maintaining what we have today is also about looking at our assets and, and with innovation and new technology, determining ways to run them more efficiently. When these plants were designed in the seventies and eighties, none of us had laptops or cell phones or AI. We didn't have any of those tools. And so with the modern technology that we have around advanced manufacturing, when you look at our knowledge of these plants, we believe at Bruce Power, not only will, will we be able to secure our units to twenty sixty, twenty seventy, but are the output of our units will be higher, and we're gonna be taking our site from what used to be in policy space, sixty-three hundred megawatts, round number, that's six point three million homes, to seven thousand megawatts with the same units. And that's just really through innovation. I call it energy conservation on steroids, because all a nuclear reactor is doing is making energy, it's making a heat, and you're transferring that heat to create electricity. So if you can find ways of harvesting more of that heat, you get more power, and that's a good thing. So, you know, most important principle is you can look at whatever the future is, but everybody agrees we for sure need what we have today. And that's what Bruce Power is really focused on, and that also includes life-saving medical isotopes. Bruce Power, our region, our province, and our country have an opportunity to, to really, I think, excel in Canada's historic role in being a producer of life-saving medical isotopes. And our existing assets provide not only a supply of electricity, but they really supply also a neutron source that goes along with that electricity, where we can irradiate targets and make life-saving medical isotopes. Fifty percent of people in this room statistically are likely to get cancer in your life. A hundred percent of us are gonna be impacted by cancer, whether it's ourselves, our, our loved ones, our friends, our neighbors, our colleagues. And so we talk often about energy as flip the light switch and the light bulbs turn on. In healthcare, a form of energy is medical isotopes used to sterilize medical equipment to diagnose cancer and to treat cancer. So in addition to making electricity, we're providing a stable supply of isotopes that we can continue to grow. The second area I really wanna focus on is what is next after refurbishment? And, and I'm gonna butcher this analogy, because you folks know this business better than I do, but I wanna give a municipal example of what I think good planning is in the energy sector. If I, if I think about a municipality that's looking to grow, that's looking to plan for the future, I think about a municipality that has a good long-term plan. And in that long-term plan, the municipality has decided, working with the county, what is zoned residential, what is zoned commercial, what is zoned industrial? Have we put the long-term utilities in place so that if and when that is needed, we're, we're not starting from scratch? And again, you folks understand the complexities of that a heck of a lot better than I do. But what we're doing in the energy sector is no different. And what I mean by that is on our site, we are, we've been allocated in Ontario's Long-Term Energy Plan up to an additional forty-eight hundred megawatts of electricity from our site. So we have a large geographic site, we have existing transmission. So we have a sixty-three, sixty-five hundred megawatt site today, we've been allocated up to another five thousand megawatts. We're obviously not in a position to entertain that kind of investment right now. We, we have to do a technology evaluation, we have to go through a methodical process. We are a private company, we are investing the dollars of Omer's pension plan members, and I think many of those are in the room today and are representing your municipality. So we have an obligation to to invest that money wisely, to be prudent, along with TC Energy and our unions, who, who also are, are partners in the business. So we're not in a position today to say we're putting a shovel in the ground to build something new, but what we can't do is we can plan for the future. And that's why we're launching a federal impact assessment process to essentially have our facility zoned, that you could add more capacity down the road. That tends to be a three-to-four-year process, upwards of five to seven. I'm not gonna get into the political, political debate on that one, I'll leave that to you folks. But what we're doing is starting that process now. So when we get to the end of our refurbishment program, and we see the developments both globally here in Ontario around this, we have our site zoned to be able to exercise that option. So we're moving the ball forward. We're doing good long-term planning. But not only are we doing a purving process, but we have to recognize that our partnership with the Soguna-Jibway Nation, in the event anything different was done in the future, they were not consulted in the initial construction of the site. There's a legacy issue there. So we're also committed to doing things differently the next fifty years than were done the last fifty years. Bruce Power didn't exist when all that happened, but that's not an excuse that we can't do things better and different going forward. The other component that's really important alongside that is working with our counties, our municipalities, the provincial and the federal government on what are all of the, you can't just build a nuclear plant in isolation. What are all the things we need to do with our supply chains, with our public services, with our infrastructure to support that? And so we really think taking the next three to five years to do that early planning, it allows us to focus on our core operations and our life extension program. But it allows us to move the ball forward in a methodical way, and I'm a big believer in you go slow to go fast. And if you do the right things upfront, it, it provides you a lower risk, more viable project later. If you look across the country at the large electricity infrastructure projects that have run into issues, it has not been technical issues that have stopped these projects. It has been community acceptance. It has been working with the public indigenous communities, it's been nimbyism in a lot of cases. And, and we are a believer that the way to work through that is by engaging early. And so that by the time you get to, you're making a decision, all facts are known. And so that's really our, so I know there's a lot of excitement, many members of council were there for our Bruce C announcement, it was an exciting day. But it is also, we need to recognize that even though there's this big, big opportunity, you eat an elephant one bite at a time. And, and we are taking this, this step-by-step approach, because as the, the dynamics change with electricity and energy in Canada, Ontario, we will be able to scale accordingly. So that's really what we have underway on the Bruce site. It's a very exciting time. We, you know, as I, as I like to say, we are doing things that have never been done before, and we're able to do that because of our strong partnerships, our strong partnerships with our organized labor partners, with our supplier partners. And I can't say enough about our employees that live in all your communities. They are, you know, I grew up in Port Elgin, I still live in Port Elgin, and you get to know people because you bump into them at the hockey arena or the grocery store. And everybody's just, we're just people that live in the community, and we go to work and we try our best. But what always amazes me is somebody that you may bump into a, at a hockey arena or at the grocery store, and they say, hey, I work up at Bruce Power. When you see what they do at Bruce Power, it's amazing. Whether they're tradespeople, whether they're maintenance people, whether they're engineers, whether they're scientists, operators, it is amazing what happens in our sector. And so I always say, we're not in the technology business, we're in the people business. The difference between a nuclear plant that runs well and not is not the technology. It's the people that run that plant. And those are your, your constituents in your community. So they appreciate your support. They appreciate the engagement, but what I would also say is part of being supportive of what we're doing at the Bruce site is when we're looking at the future, is also talking about the challenges. Talking about affordable housing. Talking about infrastructure, talking about the opioid crisis, talking about these items. I'm not gonna suggest for a second Bruce Power is the answer to those solutions, but what I can promise you a hundred percent of the time is we are a contributor to the solution. So countries or communities all over Canada have these same challenges that we do. That's not, the issues we're dealing with here are not uncommon. But what is, what is unique about this region is the fact that we have a lot of partnerships and opportunities that other communities don't. And so that's what I always say, it's not a, because affordable housing is an issue everywhere, doesn't mean it's something that, yeah, it just is what it is. It means it's something that we have a unique opportunity to, to leverage what we have here to make it better. And you have our commitment to that. So I probably have used up my ten minutes. I will stop there. I'd be happy to answer any questions that are in the slides. Any questions you have about energy in Ontario? Be careful, if you ask me a question about energy in Ontario, I'm gonna blow through your meeting agenda with time, but you asked the question, so it's not my fault.
Well, thank you, James. Certainly appreciate your time here. And you mentioned the isotopes, I'm about halfway through your podcast. There's ten of them there. They're very interesting, although some, I have to admit, the technical language sometimes is way over my head, but it's very interesting. So I, I'd encourage anybody that wants to know what that's all about to, to listen to those podcasts. The other thing I wanted to do, James, was just before I go to questions from council, is I want to acknowledge the leadership award that Bruce Power awarded to me. I appreciate that. It's, it's quite an honor, I, I have to say, and I apologize that I wasn't there to actually receive it, but thank you so much anyways. Since at least twenty sixteen, Bruce Power has led many initiatives that have brought municipal partners together. And here in Gray County, we're committed to, you know, continuing on that path of, of partnership and taking action in the clean energy sector, isotopes, what have you. In your opinion, James, how do you think, or how can you see Gray County Council in particular continuing to support Bruce Power yourself and indeed the community to do the things, the many meaningful things that you just talked about?
No, it's, it's a great question. So the first thing I would say is, is that and, and you know, you know, I'm a pretty straight shooter, I'd say if it was the case otherwise. In Gray County, whether it's at the county level, whether it's at the municipal or city level, I think the leadership approach of not keeping score is really important. And I think this, this county and this table exhibit that. A lot of the items we're trying to bring to our region are bring it from another country to Canada, bring it from Canada to Ontario, Ontario to rural Ontario, rural Ontario to here. And so I think that one team approach, I can't emphasize enough how important that is. So the first thing I would say is keep doing what you're doing, because that leadership is exceptional and it's very clear. And people that come, that, that wanna do more business in our area, they wanna invest, they wanna move their family here. That matters to them. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that I think, I think we as a, as a team, a regional team, between working with our provincial and federal level governments, there's an opportunity for us to team up more. The, the issues that are important to Gray County, that you are advancing at the federal and municipal, the federal and provincial level are important to us. They're important to our workers. You know, our getting schools getting built, our hospitals getting built, are we getting affordable housing? Some of these public health issues. So what I would say is always, it's really about you putting it back on us. Always recognize the things you are concerned about, never doubt that they're important to us. When, when we need support for the areas of energy policy, you are there for us. I can't ask for more than that. But we are a partner on those, on those issues that come across your desk. And what I can tell you is as Canada's largest private sector infrastructure project, don't underestimate how important this region is to Canada and the world. And we should leverage that. And, you know, there's a lot of funding out there available for infrastructure and all these different programs. And it's very important that we get our fair share. It is really important, because we are generating a lot of economic and strategic activity for Canada. And we need to see some of that come back. Doesn't mean all of it comes back. But some of it needs to. So I would just say, we are always a partner. If you're sending grant applications in, if we can write letters of support, if we can go to meetings, if we can, we are always there for that, and I think that's an an area we can do more on.
Excellent. Thanks, James. Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks, James, for your presentation and always being a friend in Gray County. Which you, which you always are along with Bruce. I just wanna thank you for the support you do give to the community events and, and funding that you do provide there. I know our local rodeo that we have in Bieberham, you support that along with many functions throughout Gray and Bruce and, and abroad, and I, I think the community really, really, I know they do really appreciate what you do there. And I know that the economic impact that Bruce Power does through our areas is next to none, because you spoke to that and how they, how it all trickles down to the people that work there and everything comes out of that. So I, my question is gonna be more focused on certainly expanding nuclear, as we know that's been a proven case here in Canada. Because we, you know, we, as the municipalities are being approached with, you know, we have the renewable part, and now it's battery storage and lithium batteries and, and all that issues that we are dealing with, and so I guess my question is to you is, I know that's, that's in the mix, but obviously, and we all know that everybody expects to turn that light switch on, because when it doesn't come on, your neighbor's calling, is your hydro out? Is your hydro out? Because everybody expects that to be coming on. And certainly with, with the business that you're in, it's, it's reliable. It's there. You don't hear nothing until lights don't come on. As we know, back in nineteen ninety-eight, the ice storm, that was sort of a, a time when the lights didn't come on for a number of days and that type of thing. So from that, where do you see that going? And, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. And, and subsequent, subsequent to that is, you know, we have a broad landmass of Canada, and we talk about decarbonization. And my second part, where do you see the smaller nuclear systems, like from the north and areas that are outside of that? Because a lot of the areas of generation is through carbon, you know, through carbon, through diesel generation and that kind of stuff. So I guess in the sense of moving forward, and you sort of touched the base, you know, to two thousand and fifty, and we know we're going to that electrification through Ontario and that. It's gonna take, I think it's gonna be challenges getting there, but so you know, so your, your idea around renewables and your, and the business that you're in, and secondly, with that small system, some nuclear, nuclear, that I think personally, that is a solution, because it's a proven fact of how that works. So, thank you, Mr. Warden.
First, firstly, it's a really good question. So, so to really, and you never put me on the spot, I love it. So, and I, I can't get in trouble for saying something I shouldn't, because you asked, so. So what I will do is after this, I will circulate a, a report, we're gonna be updating it in a month. A green ribbon panel that I had the privilege of sharing with a broad, broad range of unions, economic groups, Ontario Chamber of Commerce, business groups, and it looked at exactly your question. I'll just tell you where my bias is. Is, I think sometimes when we don't wanna make big decisions, we convince ourselves that incremental technologies that are important. Like, I'll tell you, I, I'm not an energy snob, we need it all. Like, we need it all. The, the question is, what's the mix? And what I would say is, it, it is easy to make decisions that put off big, large projects and think some of these more, let me call incremental rounding the edges projects are gonna replace that. So for me, if I think of what has always worked in Canada and what has always worked elsewhere in the world is reliable baseload nuclear, as much hydroelectric as we can get. That's been Canada, like Canada has one of the best, cleanest electricity systems in the world. Why? It's either hydro or nuclear. And the challenge we have when you decarbonize is what fossil fuels are really good at is peaking. Right? Like, it's like your furnace at home, it's cold, I turn the gas furnace on, it, so fossil fuels are really good for peaking. So what the energy system needs to do is, for we need to build out that large volume, that large baseload, and we have to use a mix of technologies to reach the peaking. But anybody that thinks we're not gonna have any fossil fuels in our electricity system, that's not realistic either. Right? We've already taken coal out, we need to continue to reduce natural gas, and the goal is to get to net zero, and I'm, I'm a nuclear person, so I want as much. But that's where we need to have that honest debate, but, but you will not find a country in the world that is relying on renewables and batteries. You won't. You'll find countries that rely on nuclear and hydro, or they rely heavily on fossil fuels. And so for me, it's simple, and, and the big decisions are really important. As I say, I'm, I'm very privileged, my generation, that my grandparents' generation made a lot of decisions to build the Bruce site and to build the transmission infrastructure, and to build the school I went to, and that. And I benefit from that now, and look, we're talking about extending these to twenty-seven. So I'll send that report around through the, through the, the proper channel, but, and I'd be happy to discuss it further, but this really gets at that question.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Boddy.
Thank you, Warden. I'm gonna have two questions, but I was just thinking. Net zero by twenty fifty, and all of us around this table remember that Y two K, will our computers start? Like, that's twenty-four years ago. Goes by quickly and think we're going to be there in, by twenty fifty is gonna come that fast. Maybe it won't be us around the table, but our kids are gonna be there. So it, it's gonna happen fast, and there is a lot that has to be done. So, James, two questions. You talked about private investment. Do we get to net zero without private investment, just relying on public investments? My one question, the other one is more around you, you talked about using fuel to, to hit peaks, and I think I've got this, this tank of stuff in the back of my car that's pretty easy to move around, and then it's always there. Right now, I know you're, you're producing a surplus amount of energy during certain times of the day. Other times of the day in Ontario, we have more than fifty gas-powered generating plants that are, they're feeding electricity into, to cover the peak at late day, midday. How, how are we, how are we gonna take advantage of the surplus energy? Like, obviously, storage is what it's all about, whether it be battery pump storage, hydrogen technologies that we've never even thought about. It seems to me that that storage, the use of surplus in that storage is gonna be a big part of it. What are your thoughts on that?
Yes, the first question I'll answer is on the investment front. When you look at the size of the, the need, and I think you see this in other areas of infrastructure that you deal with every day. The private sector can't do it all on its own, and the public sector can't do it on its own. So we have to find a way, and this is where I look at partners like Omer's. Those of you, there are Omer's pension plans. You, you know, you look at what, how Omer's is investing their money in Canada. There's a lot of discussion in the federal budget about, you know, pension investment. Omer's is a, a model for pension investment in Canada. So, so the private sector and that kind of investment is really important, and we can't get there without it. But it's gonna take both. The, the, the size of the challenge is so significant. So, you know, I always say, I'm not ideological about it, it's about taking the best of, of where the public service provides, the public sector provides, and the private sector, you bring a public-private partnership like we have at Bruce. So I'm a big believer in that. And I, I just look at it practically, not ideologically. So I agree with that. On your question on storage, you know, I was asked coming in here about, you know, there was some, some feedback that I had heard, and I'll just, I'll just hit the nail on the head, that there was a, there was some feedback floating around that you know, there was competition between what we're looking to do at Bruce and this project in Meaford that's looking at pump storage, that's led by TC Energy. And, and what I can tell you is, though, firstly, there is no Um, and uh, and what I can tell you is, uh, though there, firstly, there is no competition. I can set that straight right now. Uh, storage is very complimentary with nuclear. Right? So s- storage is really your only way to replace the peaking component of fossil fuels. Right? Because you, in the absence of that, um, you need something to, when, when people turn their conditioning on, as much as you have people conserve, there is always going to be peaks in the winter and the summer. Remember Quebec years ago saying, we want to forget nuclear, we're going to sell power to Ontario? Well, we're proud to have helped them out the past winters, they didn't have a blackout. Um, and, and I say that tongue in cheek because soundbites can get us in trouble. And storage is very important, and we see storage like the TC Energy project as not in competition at all. In fact, it's complimentary. Um, but these are big decisions. You know, I talk about those generational decisions. Um, these are big decisions. And, and, and I know they're challenging. And I know there's a lot to think about, but when have we ever built a subway in Ontario, a nuclear plant in Ontario, a transmission line in Ontario, a hospital in Ontario, and looked back fifty, fifty years later and said that was a mistake? Like, I, I can't think of an example. Now, there's always challenges and lessons to be learned. So, so to answer your question directly, I, I did want to, somebody brought that up to me coming in. There is no competition between the projects. In fact, the exact opposite. And when you think of what works, water and gravity is pretty certain. I don't need to import uh, critical minerals from China for water and gravity. And maybe I'm being too simple. So, um, you know, it's, it's not my place to speak, y- you know, on TC Energy's project. They're an owner, and I, and I respect that, and Bruce Power has two owners, but I did want to set the record straight on that. And in fact, I think it's the opposite. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, sir. Well, I, I think we've uh, had a really good discussion, and I, James, again, I want to appreciate your time. Um, I wrote down, go slow to go fast, especially when you're eating an elephant. So good things to live by. So thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your time again. Thank you. Okay. Uh, enough about going slow, fast, and eating big elephants. Um, choc- yeah, chocolate elephants. Yeah, if you can afford it. Uh, we have the consent agenda there for your consideration. Is there any determination of items requiring separate discussion? Counselor Boddy?
Thank you. If we could pull uh, six B, which is the Godwidge's letter with regard to Roma and Olga, I'd, I'd like to do more than, uh, I'd like to discuss doing more than just receiving.
Okay, Counselor Ackles.
Uh, thank you. And uh, six F, I believe is around the tender uh, award. I think that's all. It is. Thank you. All right, we'll uh, we'll discuss those. We have one item for direction and discussion. Or is there any further reports needing to be pulled? Okay, someone would care to move that we receive the balance of those items? Counselor McQueen, Counselor Mackey? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. As I say, we have one item for direction and discussion. That is the county strategic plan. Would someone care to move that motion there that it be uh, adopted as presented? Counselor Dickert and Counselor Nielsen? Do we need a break? We're good? Okay. CEO Windgrove is going to present this one. Yeah, we, we may need a break after this one. We'll see.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, counsel. I'm so pleased to be here this morning to uh, present our updated twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven Gray County Strategic Plan, Working Together for Success. This plan is built on the belief that se- success requires both collaboration and cooperation. And for the first time since we started doing strategic plans back in twenty twelve, this plan takes a regional approach to some of the biggest challenges facing our communities. It builds on earlier plans and the recommendations in recent approved plans and strategies. This plan will inform and focus uh, the departmental work plans and the allocation of resources to activities. We've updated, oh, sorry, apologies. Um, by way of background, um, I think we all went through a number of steps earlier this year. And I, I did want to just quickly reference the fact that um, after the workshop that we had at the end of August, um, we drafted a version of the plan. But I held back from bringing it forward for you until we got through the budget. Just to make sure that um, we were still in good alignment, that I didn't need to come back and ask any big questions of, of this council. So I think that we have stayed true to the direction, the goals and the objectives that you gave to us and, and, and talked about together at the end of August. And so the results of that is uh, the plan that you see on your desks is standing. We revisited when we got together to discuss this. We revisited our purpose and, and values. And I think this really does a great job of, of capturing our conversation. Gray County is committed to the coordinated delivery of responsive and cost-effective services that strengthen the economic, social, environmental, and cultural well-being of the diverse communities we serve. Our values are integrity, collaboration and equity, and sustainability. And I think those will be, you'll see that those are reflected throughout um, this document. Plans organized around four pillars. Um, as with earlier plans, we've got an ambitious work plan with seventy-six unique initiatives to complete and move us toward achieving our goals. The plan is evergreen in that as things are completed, new actions will take their place, as there will always be ways that we can improve and always new opportunities for us to consider to, uh, whether or not we wish to pursue them. I plan to continue the annual late fall update report to summarize progress and challenges and to seek your guidance on any required adjustments. In addition, um, we um, want to make sure that this plan is, is well communicated. Um, there's a specific page on the county's website that deals with the strategic plan and keeps all of the um, associated plans and reports are there as well. So there is a single place to be able to look at all of this. Um, we intend to communicate out with your support this morning. We'll communicate out to the public that the plan has been refreshed and is available for people to review, as well as talking to our staff in more detail. So the first priority in the strategic plan is um, about ensuring our operations are running effi- efficiently and effectively. And this has been a consistent thing that we've always had in our plans, was about making sure that our internal operations were where we needed them to be. I think we remain steadfast in our commitment to continuous improvement. And that for this particular plan, the goals and objectives here reflect our current realities. And that's why it focuses on um, cost containment and improving access to service and improving quality through innovation. We can see the, some of the highlights there. Um, when we think about the kind of activities that we're focused on around internal operations and service delivery, you know, the reduction of risk and reliability. But we've had a lot of conversations around this table about IT security, about the need, just at our last meeting, about making sure that we're on top of what's happening on our construction sites um, with regard to safety. Enhancing quality and customer service means things like um, providing access to uh, service requests on a number of, of different channels, having project management, resources, and processes in place. Um, our in financial forecasting and reporting um, items. Right now, we're implementing the new um, budget software, and this year we've started the new uh, um, budget committee to considering in greater detail throughout the year, how the cap, how the revenues and expenses, um, what they are and how they're being managed. Um, cost containment, about um, sharing assets, rightsizing, sharing procurement, all of those different part, things are part of the considerations under internal operations and service delivery. The second pillar of the plan is building communities for the future. This pillar is outwardly and future-focused. What do we need to be doing now? As James said just a few minutes ago, to make sure that we'll be healthy and successful ten, twenty, and fifty years into the future. The goal here is to collaborate across the county to create and implement plans, programs, and infrastructure investments to support resident quality of life and business success. I've noted a few of the pieces here, planning and infrastructure. We often think about things like the roads task force and the coordination of infrastructure projects. But in our case, it's even broader than that when we think about building paramedic bases in the right places for the future, or ensuring that the child care system is adequate um, for, for what our, our families need. Economic development and tourism and culture is about not only investment, but also retention of, of businesses in the county and promoting the four-season economy. Protecting our environment is reducing our emissions, energy conservations, and, you know, doing the best that we can for our forests, our trails, and our waterways. And finally, First Nations reconciliation and relationship building is part of building our communities for the future. We uh, have committed to doing a lot of learning. Recently, we talked about the land acknowledgements, um, we're training our staff, cultural safety training, and looking for new partnerships with our First Nations communities. Moving on from there, and the third pillar is workforce development. And this is one that I am really excited about, and I hope that you share that excitement around the potential benefits that we can see from pillar three. Again, as, as James just, he stole my speech, as James, as James talked about how important it is to have the right people, the right skills, in the right places. Um, it's so critical to making the difference between good and great. Um, I've been working together with um, your CAOs and they with their directors. As a team, we want our organizations to be the best that we can be. And much of the work that happens in, in this pillar, I think, um, will likely be into next year on some of our resources are pretty taken up with the D-Force implementation here at, at county. But where we want to go with this is to plan intentionally to understand what our human resource needs are, and then to grow people's skills and give them opportunities to learn new roles and advance in their careers without having to bleed. So where can people have opportunities to work between your municipalities, to work at the county, as well as getting experience at the lower tier? I think everybody having the best possible understanding of how each other's organizations work and where there are best practices or opportunities to improvement, improve, those are well understood. Um, that's so much at the heart of what the workforce development plan is meant to be. I mentioned in the, in the staff report that accompanies this, um, you're all aware of, of some of the recruitment challenges that we face in specific uh, specific skill areas. Um, we have a lot of retirements coming up, and we want to make sure that we don't drop the ball when it comes to being able to keep up our service delivery, um, and keeping to the standards that we hold ourselves to. The final pillar of the report is called, or giving everyone a place to call home. And this is really all about improving access to housing for all of our residents. Um, we talked a lot about this a number of different times last year about the need to increase the availability of housing options across the whole continuum and across the whole county. Um, we've heard that uh, this year, um, Anne Marie and her team will be creating a new ten-year housing and homelessness plan. Um, we have a housing action plan that talks about attainable housing. There's a discussion, I think, about what a regional approach to um, attainable housing looks like, and we'll be having some discussions about that at an upcoming meeting. And I think there's a lot of important work that uh, we can do here, both as municipalities, but also again, continuing to understand what it is that the private sector needs and wants to be able to move forward to expand those housing options for us. So as far as monitoring and evaluation, a plan is only good if you are keeping track of what's happening with it and, and what your progress has been like about getting to meeting your objectives. All of this work is built into the work plans of the members of the senior management team and myself. Um, there are very specific initiatives um, that are measurable. Scope to them so that they would be achievable and that they would have a, a beginning and an end date. I have quarterly progress review meetings with the senior management team. I need the senior evaluation team to be able to update them. And then, as I said, the uh, annual meeting late in the fall where we bring an overall um, report back to all of you to talk about um, where we've been and where we need to go uh, for the future. I think it's always important to acknowledge that with any plan, there are risks and, and challenges. And so this plan is based on the best information that we have available to us. But there are always economic uncertainties and cost pressures that come into play and may cause us to, you know, need to take a second look at a, at a particular initiative. Um, organizational capacity and resilience needs to be carefully managed. Your staff, as well as, as the staff here at the county, have very full plates. And when we do things, we want to do them right, and we want to do them well. And so that means that some of the work needs to be appropriately phased. Some of the work that we're doing here belongs um, to partners that are outside of our own organizations. And we've come to understand, I think, more re- more of this recently than ever, that many of our external partners are as maxed as we seem to feel sometimes. So ensuring that our contracts are properly written and appropriately managed, I think, is a really important part of ensuring that we're successful. Um, public engagement and support, again, to a point that James made earlier this morning. Um, some of the things that we're working on really do require an ongoing conversation with the public to ensure that they understand um, and are as committed to moving forward with these initiatives as we ourselves are. And finally, there are always unforeseen legislative or regulatory changes that may cause us to take a different direction. Um, either because they're, they're incentivizing a, a different direction or, or simply that uh, things need to change. So the council resolution before you this morning was to receive the plan and then adopt it as it's been presented. But as always, I welcome any questions or uh, any comments that you might want to provide this morning. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim. Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Worden. I was going to see if anybody else was wanting to go first, but thank you. Um, thank you for the, for the uh, presentation, um, CEO. Uh, just going back on housing, I mean, we uh, the Gray Highlands had a committee, a whole meeting on housing and, and uh, we had a presentation from uh, a representative from the town of Collingwood, Flare, if you remember, from the housing summit that we had last October, I think, and uh, we put there she went further to discuss about the ADUs and what they're doing, and they're actually moving forward with uh, grants, both from town of Collingwood and the county of St. Gold, just to, you know, with regards to ADUs and small units to, to be accommodated and that. It was really, I found quite interesting. I think our council was very engaged on that, and how do we streamline the availability of moving that forward is one part of of the ability to uh, have some affordability from that part. I mean, as we're all probably are starting to be aware, Amazon is coming out with a post in the box, but yeah, yeah, I'm not sure how that comes on a trailer. Yeah, I'm not sure how that comes on a trailer, Scott or whatever, but on on behind a pure later truck. But I had a call from an individual last night that there are individuals here in Gray County that is looking at. Building uh that type of modular type home. That is maybe a green stamp on it. That also is a is a plus, but also looking forward to that uh that part of um. That uh ADUs or accommodating somehow. Entry level, like I was at the Cottage and Life Show there last Friday. And I I can circulate everybody where you can buy, I don't know, like a four hundred, five hundred square foot little house. Around a hundred thousand dollars. You just need the planning ability to put it somewhere. So it's it's happening. It's there's so many different aspects of of that uh entry level. You know, a a room over your head because the affordability, as we all see, is. You know, until there's more supply, it's not going to change. And and just uh uh you know, so I think there's a lot we can build on through our planning and and just. You know, it came as a conversation yesterday in our meeting where the prohib- prohibiting. Mobile homes maybe came back in the fifties because it was not my backyard. I guess people did not want that. That just was the thing. And NIMBYism, as even James talks about, is, you know, we're gonna move past that and that. Also. The announcement this week with regards to the federal, or sorry, the provincial budget with regards to continuing with funding for infrastructure. Is something that, you know, the water and sewer and that type of thing. I think we need to continue to take advantage or however uh of that. And James said, we need to get our fair share in this area as well. So just a few comments, Mr. Warden, but I think we have to keep looking at that. Because it, I think it addresses a lot of your other parts is workforce. Right? You get, you you know, they have a place to to live and and all that. Also, if if it also works for those that are downsizing. Freeze up that twenty five hundred square foot, three bedroom house for a family that allows people to move somewhere. Right? Whatever mix of housing that is. So anyway, just a couple of comments, Mr. Warden, and we need to keep pushing on that housing part. Because I think it helps accommodate a lot of other things that are in the plan.
Thank you for those comments and that I think that's really important. Liz Buckton, our housing uh policy planner, has been, I think, working on the housing action plan. I don't know if Randy or Scott. You want to make any for the comments at this time, or will we just wait for the report? Okay, so we, as I say, there's some good work happening and we are coming with an update to council very soon. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Kim. Any other questions? Okay, oh, Counselor uh Greg.
Thanks, Warden. Um I guess I'll be somewhat direct. Uh I'm quite frustrated with the document and how we got here today. I'm uncertain. When I read this, when it was posted as to why we had the session at the Inon the Bay and at Holstein last year because. Uh when I first read through here and it said refer to the the website for details to inform how we got here. There's fifteen or or twenty plans that were preexisting on the website that are tiles there. So I thought, am I missing something? Am I missing the information sessions? Or the information that came out of those sessions? Why do we have the sessions? Why did we pay the consultant? Forty thousand dollar approximate dollars to put this plan together. To essentially just draw out a staff. A bunch of recommendations that are already in those reports that are all the tiles on the website. So I found it very frustrating to see. How we landed here today with this document. And what we went through, we we told the public that we went to the public. Who we represent. And then we had the sessions at the Inon the Bay. And at Holstein, and it's uncertain to me how we incorporated any of that feedback back into this document. Um I was expecting appendices or some form of informative. Steps here that that would tell us how how we've landed here, so. My personal. Opinion is that um. It would be nice to have more information to inform how we've we've exactly landed here that's beyond just the existing. Plans that are that are on the si- on the website unless I'm missing something. Uh which which you can certainly correct me if I am missing. Something along the way, but everything drove you back to the website to the tiles that are are there. Um so that's that's my feelings is is frustration, uh I guess to the process and to the outcome. And um. I I'm not sure. How any of this represents any of the. Sessions in the last year from the public or from council, uh because if it's council's document. The strategic plan is from the public through council, through to C A O and staff to implement, and this is. Preexisting plans, taking recommendations and going back up, and it looks like kind of just fulfilling departmental wants. Um so. That that I guess that's my frustration is. Is the process.
I I'm I'm afraid I'm not perhaps understanding. The the document as it stands reflects the feedback that we received. That I and staff received and the conversations that we had um during the sessions. Um about what council felt was important to them. And the goal and objectives that they wanted to see us taking action on. What were the most important things that the most important questions, the most important challenges? That the county um needed to take action on? I think the um certainly from a staff perspective, when we put um. Various initiatives into into a plan like this. Um I think what we're trying to um demonstrate to the public is that we are not. Um moving forward with anything of our own initiative. There's nothing in here that hasn't been to council for some discussion for support or approval. Or resources. And I think so that's part of it is that that those um plans and recommendations are there. To demonstrate that we've done a lot of homework and. That that information has been to council, it's been adopted. Whether as it was originally drafted or or as it was asked to have been revised. And then when we discuss, there's a tremendous amount, as you know, a tremendous amount of work. That happens in any given year. And this process of kind of distilling that down and saying, these are the pieces. That we feel we could take priority um is what you see reflected here. Is there something in the report? Is there something in the plan that you feel is um? Either missing or is not what you feel that the public or yourselves wouldn't support? Is there is?
Well, I think you've identified for me my uncomfortableness with approving it today is that there's not clarity. Uh to identify the incorporation of. Of the commentary from the survey, from the public, from council. Uh it looks like a great big leap from an afternoon in Holstein where we last met to this document. So I think it's it's just the lack of clarity. Um I understand that staff have have incorporated that, but. It's not really evidenced well. Uh how it differs from what might be in the preexisting work plans or already in some of these master plans. It, a lot of these items are, I'm already familiar with because I'm like, well, that's just out of someone's master plan here and his master plan there. I'm like, we didn't need a strategic plan for that. What's changed? What occurred last year in terms of hearing from council that has altered direction in any way, shape or form? So I I guess you've kind of identified it. It's just the lack of clarity. Um walking through the input from the consultant, I'm uncertain as to what role. The consultant has has parlayed from what they heard to to this document here, so those that's. Those are my comments. Thanks.
I wonder if it's um a case of the tyranny of the many. The the there are quite a number of reports that we've seen as as council from the past that identify issues that need attention. But you, w- w- we as a group can't do them all. They're all important, but we can't prioritize them all because they're just. There's only twenty four in a day. So I I think this is a masterful uh attempt to winnow that winnow that down if you uh. Want to put it that way into what are the priorities amongst all these other. Important things. So I I at least that's my take on it and and I'm, you know. Whether you agree what what the priorities uh as set out in this document are or not as a group. That's what staff have seen as the four priorities or pillars from the council and from all the other. Uh input that has gone into this document, but anyway, I'll, Kim, I'll let you if you have anything further.
Well, again, I I I think that the most significant concern that that I have is. Is there something missing here? If there's something missing here, then I need to know about that. So that I can take that back and and figure out how to um adjust things so that we have the appropriate. Time, resources and 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 plans in place to ensure that whatever that missing thing is, it gets addressed. That to me is job one. I can certainly, um if you were interested to see um the the summary notes, the. The information that was put on um our our poster boards at at the, you know, on the bay and stuff like that. That I had all of that background information is there, but that's not something that we would normally share. It's because it's big and messy, and so we're trying to, you know, give you something that's that's clean and organized and tidy. Um so, you know, there's nothing, there's absolutely nothing to hide here. People want to see notes or anything like that, we can share them, but I'm, if there's something missing. I would like to 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 understand what that is so that it can be addressed.
And and for me, it's just that. It's not the notes in specif- in specifics. It's the refining. Of what staff have heard that led to these themes, like the creation of those themes, so. That's the part that that I'm just not comfortable with is it's just a big leap. From here to here and the absence of anything that's refined the process from my from my seat, from my perspective to this point. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Body and then Counselor uh Kentner.
Thank you, uh Warden Millen. Um. Kim, I think one of the things that's missing, you know, what specifically is missing is something that came up uh from several of us. It wasn't just me was. Municipal restructuring and whether that's boundary change, whether that's uh shared services. Uh there's ways to become more efficient and it came from several of us that day that I don't see in here. I raised it a couple of weeks ago somewhat tongue in cheek at one of our meetings here, and I think it was a warden of somewhere. Up there that the answer came back that it's going to be uh in the, you know, the strategic plans coming. It's not in there. Um I think that's one of those things that should be in the strategic plan that we should be thinking about is how do we come become more efficient? Upper level, lower level, uh working together, whether it is boundary adjustments that I think we should look at or just service uh. Sharing that I think needs to be in there a- and I don't see it there. So I was a little disappointed when I read it for the same reason.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Uh there are, there is work ongoing right now to look at the delivery of services. Um and the sharing of services. I would suggest that um at this early stage, it's not. Explicit here because of fact that you're working with people and we need to um proceed. In a orderly fashion um when it when it comes to uh looking at those things. With regard to the overall municipal restructuring. That is a a a triple majority situation in in some cases. Um in others, it's more much more simple thing about willing partners. We've never had a. We've never had a report in this term of council to do with restructuring, although it has been discussed in the past. Um I can certainly um adjust this report to reflect. Uh the uh. The desire of this council to bring forward a staff report that discusses municipal restructuring and asks. For um council direction in that regard.
And and thank you for that. I. It's sort of a chicken and egg thing in a sense that uh you're not putting it in the strategic plan because we don't have uh something already there. From my point of view, we haven't brought that motion because I thought it was going to uh be in there. You know, we've got. Less than three years ago in this uh in in this uh term, it seems like we've taken a kick at that can or disgusted or not disgusted. Or left it floating in the air perhaps uh for a few terms that I've been up here. Um but but we're not getting there, so I I thought it would be in there. The fact that things are ongoing is great. But that means that uh it should be in a strategic plan in a sense. Understand why specifics wouldn't be. Set out. Um but the fact that there is a willingness or that we're moving in a certain direction. As a strategy, I think should be in the strategy plan. I don't know if I'm making sense, but I I I hope I am. I think it should be there somehow. And it should be something that we uh work towards or, you know, I I guess it's on us now to uh. Perhaps bring a motion and put it on the table, but I I. Think it should be in there somewhere as a strategy to at least look at. Uh and and make us all more efficient is my thinking. Thanks.
I will um if with council is is in in agreement, I will um. Make a a an amendment to the plan to um specifically. Mention a discussion of um municipal restructuring. Um with regard to um the restructuring of um the delivery of specific services. That work is ongoing and you will see um at least one report on that topic. Um before July this year.
Counselor Cantor.
Thank you, uh uh Mr. Warden and through you. Uh I also spoke to uh. To restructuring at at the uh sessions that we had and and it wasn't a popular subject. But my concern is that uh uh I don't see much prospect of change in provincial government. For the foreseeable future, and there is definitely a lot going on at that level about. Restructuring things uh as far as municipalities are concerned. So my my point was just simply that we. We should be ready uh and and be advancing our best ideas on how restructuring might happen. As opposed to uh receiving a report and and being behind the eight ball on it. But I I want to say um this is a great document. I understand it perfectly. We we turned out uh uh our own document in Miford. But we didn't hire consultants because we already had the pillars and I, from what I can see, we already had the pillars here. It was just how we build on them. And I I think that the most useful um exercises were those where we were together and were able to chat it up. And discuss these things, uh but I we we did that in Miford without hiring consultants. And we came away actually with sixteen uh projects that all uh support our pillars. But are things that we're going to try and accomplish in this term. And as I say, I have no criticism of the report, but I think that we should think more often. It is this something that we really need a consultant for because I don't feel we. I think we could have done this ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you through you, Warden, and to the some of the questions and I and I'm just. I'm just wondering if some of the support documents are are. I'm just wondering if some of the support documents are, are, is, if the question is, is um, how do we communicate to the public if the public were accessing the website to determine, okay, here's all this. And we talked about all of this, but we have to focus it in. We can't do it all. So all those post-it notes, that big wonderful mess, big audacious goals um had to be streamlined in. Um, my other question is, is there's some of these services where we were talking about potentially looking at regional services, regional uh reorganization of the community and, and on, just at a quick glance, we have planning efficiencies. We have master plans with member municipalities. We have regional waste management assessment and assessing the potential for countywide waste management services. Creating policies for staff secondments. I think in that, we'll also in, encompass that regional review. And if out of those things comes some reorganization, I don't think that um, I don't think the, the lack of it being stated in the document implies that we're not looking at that. And all of these little pieces are part of that puzzle. Um, I want to thank staff for trying to take that big beautiful mess that we came up with at Bay Shore and at Holstein. Um, we're not going to agree on all of the priorities. But it was clear when you saw, you know, a bunch of post-its on, in one section and a few on another that we, that that's where we generally want the focus. We're not all going to agree. So thank you to staff. Um, I think that we have the start of, and as you said, it is very flexible and it's going to change and our priorities may change. And that's why we're going to do this annually to review those priorities and say, well, based on what the province has just brought down or based on, on what we've learned through this process, we will have a better idea of how to get there. So thank you and thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. So I, oh, Counselor Nielsen, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Warden Millen. You know, as we're having a conversation and, and to what Counselor Body has brought up regarding the restructuring conversation. You know, Kim's response is that if there's a consensus that that should be part of this plan. I don't know if there is a consensus. We had these conversations that were um, kind of brainstorming sessions. I didn't see nine, ten, twelve council members saying yes, that we need to have these conversations. I know we're having discussions to what Counselor DeBreen just brought up regarding certain service levels and how we can align certain services. But that to me doesn't say restructuring. I think if Gray County puts out a strategic plan that it details that our goal as a county is to move toward restructuring, we're telling our lower tiers, we're coming to tell you what to do. And that's, I don't think that's the way we want to go. The, the, I, I haven't had, I haven't seen those conversations at a lower tier. And I mean, I've been here for just over a year and maybe haven't had the same experience as Counselor Body as to the conversations that have taken place here. But I don't want to see a strategic plan that's coming forward suggesting, you know, municipal restructuring when there's no conversations happening at that lower tier. Um, supporting that, to me, it would feel the same pressure we're seeing from the province that comes to us and says, we're going to tell you what to do, trickling down that effect. And so I don't think I'm comfortable with saying, let's add restructuring conversations as part of our strategic plan moving forward. Counselor DeBreen just pointed out, there's a few parts in here that are speaking to strategic goals and alignments and, and how do we become more efficient as a county and as lower tiers? But there's no emphasis here suggesting um, re-alignment or restructuring of the uh, system that we have now. So I, I, I think I myself at least wouldn't be prepared to say, let's add restructuring in terms of the strategic plan. I don't think I'm ready for that. I think there needs to be a further conversation here at this council table as well as our lower tier municipalities before that's something we should be putting.
Thank you, sir. Any other? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Um, Kim, you know, thanks very much to you and all the staff. I think the uh, the report strategic plan is generally reflective of what I recall from the sessions that I attended, even though we may not all agree on some specific initiatives or where they should rank. Um, I think it's reflective of the majority, uh, the consensus that was obtained at those sessions. Restructuring, um, there is potential merit in looking at restructuring. I'm not sure it needs to be added to the strategic plan today. I don't think the work's been done by this council and full discussions have occurred at this council, nor could I support it right now, not having a discussion at the lower tier. Uh, you know, you mentioned the triple majority. Before we start doing anything, I think we'd have to have a, a more of a consensus around the room that this is a topic that we seriously want to look at. Shared services certainly could go into the document. Uh, I don't think there's any of us that don't think shared services is something we need to look at where, where it makes sense. So um, that would be as far as I could support. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Counselor McQueen.
Just winding things back here a little bit. Uh, again, I want to thank staff for what they brought forward. I mean, it's a guideline. Things happen every day that sometimes, you know, divert us to focus on something else. But I look back, you said, you know, our first one was two thousand and twelve, you, Mr. Warden, is somebody had the envision of having gray roots. I think that's a huge asset that we have today. Paved shoulders. All our roads are, are, you know, have the widened shoulders, right? And, and that's proved to be a very beneficial thing. Long-term care, you know, other things that we, you know, I think James said it earlier on that people ahead of us made decisions that reflect today. And obviously it's going to be evolving and it's going to be changing as time goes on. Um, you know, obviously a lot of these points, four points, you've got to get it down to, like, you could have sixteen points and you get nothing done or you just focus it on some and then you got the underneath it. So I'm quite happy to support this, you know, there's nothing saying at any time a council that can put a notice or motion on the table and say, we want to report back here. We'll look at that. Let's, you know, just have that as a report, come back. There's nothing stopping that conversation, but I, I would agree with my two previous speakers and, you know, that I don't recall us having that strong conversation about amalgamation or restructuring in the sense of the political side or the representation type. We just went through the election. I don't hear that. What I do hear is some in the wilderness saying, you know, we had amalgamation twenty-three years ago or whatever. I don't know. Anyway, that's passed and we move on. So Mr. 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 Warden, I would say that we move forward with this. It's, it's, it's a living document. You know, things change, but I, I think this is something that we need to, to approve and move on.
Okay, thank you. In the absence of any amendments, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Host of any? That is carried. Thank you, Kim. Okay, uh, we have, do we need a break? We only got, we do? Okay, well, let's see. It is now eleven thirty-five. We'll come back at quarter to twelve. One minute warning. Rob, if you want to fire that machine up, please. And I get the thumbs up from Rob, I think we still, yeah, we got a, we got a quorum going on here. Okay, we got, uh. We need to wait for councillor Boddy. Well, let's, let's go to, uh, six F first. We have the two consent items to discuss. Uh, councillor Eccles, please.
Uh, thank you, and I think six F. Uh, dealing with the. Awarding of a tender. Last year, uh, we went through the tender documents and whatnot. And I think it questioned whether there was any, you know, there were set times. That we needed to have and was there any penalties for not meeting those times? And my understanding is. I guess. The company, uh, the company that's in, uh, recommended here today. How did they handle that? And where, how do we get around if there was any violations from work done by this company over the years? How do we continue to do that? Because certainly from the private sector. If they weren't delivering, uh, or if there was any history of not delivering, uh, on time or anything. Probably wouldn't ask them to bid anymore. And that's, I just. First question is, how has been our past practice, especially in the past year? With this company and is there anything in letting these tenders? That that is taken into account? When we have, uh, companies bidding on projects from their, for their past performance appraisal?
Mr. Hoy, please, Pat?
Yeah, through you, Warden, uh, thank you councillor Eccles, that's, that's a big question, we're always, um, you know, trying to make all our jobs be successful, obviously, we want every job to go well, so. I will say that all our twenty-three construction projects, uh, reached substantial performance. Um, some sooner than others. Um, we do have our liquidated damages in our contract, which is two thousand a day. And I will say that some of the contracts did not reach the completion dates and there was liquidated damages incurred and paid in the final payment certificates. So there is, um, in every job, we, we will have our substantial performance that they reach when the job is. Basically, the road is back to its intended purpose, which all our jobs were this year. There is still, uh, you know, a list we make at the end of the year. Um, things that aren't done, then next year there'll be a warranty walkthrough, so there's maybe things that happened over the winter, some of them weather-based, maybe. Um, some of them contractor performance-based and we'll have a list of deficiencies that will be fixed. Um, so that being said, we also at the end of every year go through a contractor performance appraisal with every contractor. So same old thing, some are better than others. For a variety of factors, maybe the construction manager, maybe the job was easier, maybe the weather was better. Um, you know, variety of, of things, but we do try to work with our contractors. Um, to, to kind of fix those, uh, weak spots or things that we see that could have been better. Um, and, and in some of these cases, there, you know, we, we do have some work to do with the contractors to. To kind of bring them along a little bit and, and I know the contractors that we've talked to. They take those ratings very seriously and they try to improve, sometimes it ends up being someone different in charge of a crew the next year. Um, so. Um, oh, the other thing I was going to mention was, we kind of looked, because some of the jobs, I mean, most of the jobs were good last year. You know, some of them had some struggles, we kind of looked internally at our own operations a bit as well. Um, we, uh, and with all the occupational health and safety changes with the Sudbury ruling, um, we have, uh, a contract administrator that starts on Tuesday. A very experienced construction person. So he's going to be out there, uh, a lot more, um, just kind of making sure everything is going the way it's supposed to be going and then we would pay for it to go. Uh, we train our inspectors, our inspectors are internal, we train them every year, we've, we've kind of put a, um. Okay, um, yeah, we just, we were doing a boot camp this year, so we always do some training. But it's just a little more intensive this year, a little more interactive, maybe a little less, um, just telling the people. What we want them to do, but getting them to fill out some of that paperwork. Um, so we know internally. Um, we, uh, we need to be on our contractors as well. Um. You know, and like I said. The, when I look at last year's jobs, some of them, the, the final product was quite good generally. Um, it just probably took too long to get there. Or something, and they didn't pay for that with the liquidated damages, which is our cost recovery, so. Uh, we don't have a lot of concerns. Um. But we, we really are on it this year again to make sure that the jobs go well.
Thanks, Pat. Um, I neglected to get a mover and secondary on this before we started, uh. Someone care, councillor Greg and councillor Nielsen, thank you. Councillor Nielsen, you had a remark or a question?
Thank you, Warden, kind of following up on councillor Eccles' comments and, and through you to Pat. Um. For, so we have three tenders available to us, how do we score the tenders and, and in scoring the tenders, obviously. The recommendation today is to go with the most cost-effective, uh, bid, but as part of that scoring, as part of that tendering, is it? Also conversation there regarding past performance of the, uh, firm and, and contracted, uh, company because I think that kind of. Would feed into what councillor Eccles' concerns are.
Yeah, ours are, are basically price-based, our, our spec has all the things that they're supposed to do, we really, we. There's a provision in there that if we're in litigation with a contractor, for instance, we may not award something. We aren't in litigation with any of our contractors that did on these jobs, so. You know, that's not really in there. Um, I know there is, there is other systems. Um, when I was a consultant for MTO, you would be half your ongoing rating and half price would be the way it would work. But then if you go down that road, then you have to have someone manage the rating system, then you have to have something where they can appeal the rating system. Then, you know, and then also. It might be a job where just because you did a good job last time doesn't mean you're doing a good job this time and you might end up spending more money to get the same product, like, you know, we have our spec, there's our drawings. Uh, there's our quality assurance, there are quality control. Our inspectors are supposed to make sure it gets built the right way, so that's kind of on us. Um. So, uh. You do wonder, I mean, there is, there is contractors that are better than other contractors, right? So. Sometimes if it's a few thousand dollars, you do question the system of tendering in a way. Um, but that's kind of the public system too.
Councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. My question is in regards to the, the roadwork that's being done itself, Pat. Um, I'm glad to see that, uh, the hill to the east is being lowered for better line of sight. In our roads exchange, though, we are. I think there's some consensus that, you know. Five and six will become county roads at some point, that intersection in particular, we have had on. I think I've seen it on future works at that intersection possibly being a roundabout. So I guess my question is, if it does, if five and six do get converted to a county road, which will likely increase an already busy road. What are the plans for that intersection and does this roadwork interfere with any future plans for that intersection?
Uh, through you, yeah, that, that intersection in particular is in the DCs for a future intersection upgrade as well. Um, there's a few in there that we added kind of in the spirit of Vision Zero, uh, the last DC, uh, that went through. Um, so right now, uh, this year, we're, we're cutting that hill down a bit or that, you know, that little rise that's there. And we're also including some illumination outside the contract, so we're working now with, with hydro to get a, um, some light there, just to, not that. There's been no pattern to the accidents that are there, really, just like, it's not like it was based on the fact that it's. We're older, it's just, it's kind of a random thing. Um, but again, all those jobs that are in our DCs for intersection improvements, because I think two and forty was in there as well, like Blue Mountain had, had asked some questions about that. Um, those are jobs that we need to keep, uh, moving forward to try to make sure, even though. Geometrically, there's nothing wrong with the intersection, it's got the oversized stop signs, it's got the flashers. For whatever reason, you know, there's a lot of ongoing accidents there and, you know, this year we're doing three and four. Which geometrically, there's nothing wrong with it again, but we're doing the roundabout at three and four, and then those other ones will fall in line to, um. To get done eventually at some point too, uh, but we've got to work them into our capital, we're not all in our tenure capital yet.
Councillor McQueen.
Uh, a comment question, a comment, so I'm sure all construction companies are finding it challenging with retiring people that are retiring and probably. Good expert people that are leaving, so they're probably challenging with that. But if usually we see five to six companies tendering on our road projects. If a company is getting all the tenders, they can say no, can they not? So if they feel that, okay, they've met their quota and there's no way we can do it, they have the, you know, they can say, no, I, I, I'm booked up, I can't, I can't do it. And then the other side that I've seen is what happens if sometimes company A takes on too many jobs, you get close to the winter. I know there was a situation a number of years back in year number thirty where it got too close and we ended up having to have to pay half the cost to repave it the next year. So, you know, you get closer to that end of the season because of whatever, you, 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 you have the fines and the fees. What you get, winter's coming and, you know, and that was an example of year number thirty, I'm not sure if it was ten years ago or twelve years ago, or. It went too late and it didn't stick and we had to, the county had to pay for half of it to do it the next year, so how do you? It's more of a comment, I guess, but that, that maybe it's a bit of reflective maybe of last year, but company A who's getting more, they can say no.
Well, I don't have the purchasing people here, but, um. Yeah, like, we have done that in the past where, where people have said no. And, um. I, I do recall one case where they actually had to pay a penalty for that, because their price was way on everybody else, it was kind of an agreement they were going to tender. Uh, but in general, we'd be pretty acceptable to some changes in the contract, like, or sometimes they'll bring in another, like, there's, they list their subs in the contract. Um, that being said, they can almost request an additional sub too, right? So. And as far as some of that late in the year stuff, there is some of that on various jobs, like, um, there's a section on seven that was paved outside of spec. It was below five degrees. So that, we would say, you can pave it, because you want to, you know, to get us through the winter, but you got to come back and fix it. And sometimes hydro seeding is one that always goes, you know, you want to, you want to put the hydro seed down in, you know, late August, September. If they don't put it down till November, whatever, you know, it's not going to grow, like, there's no, not warm enough days, you don't want those warm days and cold nights. So that ends up, sometimes they have to go back and fix those areas, those are under warranty and they end up doing them again, or sometimes it will grow the next, you know, it will grow the next year, but. Um, yeah, we do have a list of deficiencies every year with our final walkthrough, we readdress in the spring and then at the end of the season with our year warranty, we address them again.
Alrighty. Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed if any? That is carried. Thanks, Pat. Welcome back to six, uh, B now, councillor Boddy.
Like to, uh, move an amend, amendment to that, no, I guess I'm not doing that, I would like to move. A slightly different motion than what is, uh, the recommendation and it would be, uh. Uh, a motion to receive the correspondence from the town of Godrich and to support or adopt, I'm going to need Tara's help on that. Uh, the resolution contained therein. Uh, which is to, uh, support combining Roma and Ogra conferences. And, uh, that the warden write a letter to Roma and Ogra and copy it to the town of, uh, Godrich to, uh, to show that support. It's my understanding that, uh, it was originally put together with a resolution from the county of Gray. Way back when and, uh, the members voted at Ogra and at Roma to put it together. Uh, without going back to the members, it was pulled apart and it makes sense that it goes back together, it's, uh. Uh, more financially reasonable for all of us to attend one conference and I always found the conferences were a heck of a lot better when you had a combination of Ogra and Roma. Topics to, uh, to go to the sessions, so I, I'll, I'll need Tara's help there to, uh, to fix that, but that's my motion.
Thank you, second, councillor Debrin. Here, oh, here Sarah's got one on the screen there. Somewhere, no, not yet. She will though, any discussion on the, uh. Thought councillor McQueen.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to councillor McKay, I know he's a representative that sits on Ogra, I just wondered if there's any conversations that, that board of. Upending that back together again. Through you, Mr. Warden.
Good question, uh, councillor McKay, do you have anything to add there? Go ahead, sir. You're muted, Terry. Nope. I can see that you're not muted, but we can't hear you. Do you know sign language? No. So the motion is on the screen. Oh, oh, yeah, she's got, he's getting professional help here now. Okay, if there's no further discussion, councillor Mackey, go ahead, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, I completely agree with councillor Boddy, uh, having been to the, the joint conference of, uh. Good Roads in, in Roma, it was always a, a very good conference and it was unfortunate that the two associations couldn't play in the sandbox together, but. They need to work out their differences and have one combined conference. Thanks.
Fair point. Councillor Greg.
I'd just like to say that member Mackey, uh, member McKay, uh, being a board member on Ogra, I certainly hope if it's not being the topic of discussion, that he will. Passionately pursue it being a topic of discussion, it's an atrocious waste of taxpayers' dollars. To have the two conferences separated, it's worse, or more so now in the last couple of years with the escalation in hotel costs and meal costs and. In registration, every component of it. Is significantly more even than it was ten years ago, so it only makes sense for the taxpayers of Ontario that councillor. McKay, we're fortunate to have him at this county and being able to advocate. Uh, at Ogra to, um, put these conferences back together for the good of all Ontarians. Uh, resources are precious and, um, having conferences split apart doesn't represent. Or reflect just how precious resources and the taxpayers' dollars are, so, uh, hopefully in the near future, uh, member. Uh, councillor McKay would return positive information, uh, to these chambers on advancement of such a topic.
Thank you, sir. And Terry, yeah, Terry's supportive of that, there we go, that's all we needed was that thumbs up. Very good, Terry. Okay, so I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed if any? That is carried, thank you very much, everyone. Uh, we have no close meeting matters, is there any other business that can come before this meeting today? Not seeing any, any notice of motion? Councillor Debrin.
Thank you, through you, Warden, I just want to mention that I will be seeking to bring a notice of motion in the coming. Meetings, uh, possibly as early as the first meeting in April to seek council's endorsement for my nomination. To seek election to the Amo County Caucus.
Very good, thank you very much, and thank you for putting your, or considering putting your name forward. It's always a good thing. Councillor McQueen.
Just going back to other business, can you just re- repeat or, or maybe councillor Metrusov, maybe she's gone. About this afternoon about that opportunity of Great Lakes.
Sure can, uh, it is the Great Lakes St Lawrence, uh, Cities Initiative. It is their quarterly meeting, as I understand it, at the Thornbury, uh, or the Blue Mountains Town Hall in Thornburg. Um. It, it, it's open to, uh, well, we all got an invitation to it. It begins at one o'clock in fifty-three minutes. And, uh, so, uh, yeah, you're all welcome to come to it, uh. As far as I know, I'm attending and so, uh, we hope to see some of you or all of you there. And then there's a reception, that's, there's a reception at after, at the Thornbury Sidery, just down the street. Councillor Debrin.
I'm not sure, but I think pre-registration was required because of space limitations.
Absolutely, yes, that's a good point. So Peter, I don't know if you're registered or not, but. Maybe, are you going to be there?
Yeah, uh, thank you through the warden, it, it, pre-registration was required, I think there's going to be about fifty-five people there and, um, spaces already. All the, all the available spaces have already been, uh, allocated based on the pre-registration, councillor Debrin is correct.
All right, thank you, excellent. So, um, if there's no further business, I'll ask Peter to adjourn. You'll move that second by? Mr. Hutchison, councillor Hutchison, all those in favor? We're adjourned, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.